Elementary education teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second? Thank you, Aubrey.
Makes it really easy with only four of us here to pick your name.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations, Olivia. Kimberly Freckin, elementary education teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I have Tom and...
Aubrey.
Aubrey. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations, Kim. Morgan Hill, science teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second? Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations, Morgan. Jean Paul Jordan, science teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Aubrey. Any questions or comments? I don't think Jean's here.
He's not here tonight, no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? And congratulations to Jean. Haley Crowley, elementary education teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Aubrey. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations, Kayla. Caitlin Loafego-Wesler, English teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Aubrey. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations. Christopher McAllister, music teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion? Okay, so Aubrey and Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations. Catherine Pullen, music teacher effective September 1st, 2025. Oh, I did, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Apparently I need to clean my glasses and get the water droplets off of them. Erica Melly, special education teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations, Erica. Now Catherine Pullen, music teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Aubrey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations, Katie. Sharon Vale, English teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Aubrey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations, Sharon. And Hope Vega, Spanish teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got Aubrey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? And congratulations to Hope. And Delilah Lynn Wells, elementary education teacher effective September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? And congratulations, Delilah Lynn. And can we have one more round of applause for the whole group? Congratulations. And thank you very much for all that you do for the district and your students. And there will be no feelings hurt if you decide you want to say goodbye. Have a great one. Take care. Thank you. You're awesome. Okay, I am going to call to order our public budget hearing at 6:14 PM. And it is appropriate to select a chairperson for this annual election and budget vote. This chairperson will conduct the meeting and will open and close the polls on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. And we wish to appoint Stacy Black as the annual meeting chairperson. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Aubrey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The floor is yours, Stacy.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I am just going to introduce our superintendent, Ms. Sexton. And to her right is our board president, Stephanie Champney. And then board members, Thomas Tasber, Tiana Mosman, and Aubrey Naraki. And we are missing tonight our vice president, Chris Whittall, and also Molly Willis and Benny Hatkinson. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sexton.
Okay, welcome, everybody. So I'm going to review our budget for the 25-26 year. This is our budget proposal, as everybody probably knows. May 20th is New York State's budget vote, very important day, so please tell your friends to come out and vote. In Whitney Point, we have a motto where kids are the point, and we have a mission that says, "Our task is to provide an excellent education ensuring that all children maximize their potential, become contributing citizens, and pursue lifelong learning." Our district vision is to be a community of excellence achieved through a commitment to high performance, morale, and involvement. If you see some of those happy faces and you see some of these people who work very hard every single day in our school district to make that happen, all of them are inspired by these words on the screen. Those words also are what lay the foundation for our budget goals each year. Each year we look to focus on education, obviously that's our main task, but also to build a sustainable budget, develop a reasonable tax levy within the applicable regulations. And we have a, we are stewards of this district. We are hired to make sure that we are taking care of our facilities, that we are attracting employees, that we'll work with our students and give them a high-quality education. Obviously, all of that costs money. So this school year, for the 25-26 proposed budget, we have an increase of 4.63% in spending. Our budget last year was $46,000, almost $500,000, and our proposed budget this year is $48,600, I wish it was thousand, $48,651,000. That's an increase in dollars of just over $2 million. Just like everybody in their personal life, the costs of things continue to go up. And in our district, we are a human enterprise, so all the things that happen in our district just about have to do with salaries and benefits and things that continue to increase each year. And also just paying for materials and supplies and gas and electric and all the other things. Purchases of buses that are vital to our mission continue to go up in cost. Our proposed tax levy increase is 2.05%. And in Whitney Point, when we go out with a 1% tax increase, we get $88,951. So just over 2% gives us that $182,350 in a tax levy increase. So in our revenue projection, this is a little bit of a tricky thing right now because you may have heard that New York State has an understanding or is close to having a budget right now, but they actually have not finalized or approved the budget. And if you look up at the top line, we get most of our revenue from state aid. So it's a little bit out of order that we have to come out with a budget and that you're, you know, present a proposed budget to you when we don't exactly know what we're going to get from the state. So these numbers are based on what the governor had proposed when she first did her aid projections at the beginning of the, this new year in January. If you look right there, we have an increase, those projections that we got early on from the governor were very favorable for our district, so we're very thankful for that. We had a, like, over a $3 million increase in state aid from all sources. And if you look down the bottom, the total increase, just like you saw on the previous slide, in our budget is, in this proposed budget, is just over $2 million. If you look at the revenue, this graphic always brings it home a little bit more. State aid, again, which is very, very important to us in our district, and the reason, I just kind of like to point this out, people often say, "Well, it's maybe not good to be so reliant on state aid." But the reason that education is funded the way it is is that every, every school community has a different tax base. And New York State is committed to make sure that students across the state, no matter what town or what school district they live in, they have a reasonably equitable educational experience. So New York State collects taxes, and then they redistribute those taxes across districts based on a funding formula that has a lot to do with the tax base and what can be raised in those communities to try and equal the playing field from district to district. So our district, as you can see here, total state aid is 78.56%. It changes a little bit each year depending on the formula. Our tax levy makes up, our local tax levy makes up 18.66% of our projected revenue. We have some other small revenue sources, you can see it's a little over 1%. And then we tap into some fund balance to give us another percent and a half. Budget by component comparison, there are specific components that are required to be carved out in a school budget. And if you look here, and these graphics, you can see that the green portion is the program portion, which is the most important part of the budget because that's actually the teaching and learning that happens in classrooms. Last year, that was 69.68% of our budget. This year, our proposed, our proposal is a 70.67% of our, of our budget is, goes directly to those costs. The other components are the administrative component, the capital component, which put all together with the program, give us our total budget. So administrative component, what is that? You can see that that's a pretty significant change, it's 7.78% increase over last year. If you look, there's a couple of things that drive those costs, but salaries and benefits of administrators, as I said, those continue to go up. Also, though, legal services, insurance continue to raise, we don't have a lot of control over some of those costs. BOSI's administrative and capital costs also have gone up, and you'll see that brought out a little bit more in this, this next project, the next slide. The cost from year to year, from 2024 to 2025, are listed right there, and some significant jumps, you can see down that last line, employee benefits, again, are a big driver of this increase in costs. The capital component, which really is our facilities, are the buildings and the maintenance of those buildings. School bus purchases, all of the things are the capital of this district. So salaries and benefits of custodial staff, operations and maintenance and security, debt service on buildings and capital projects, school bus purchases and capital outlay projects, all of those things go towards maintaining our facilities or keeping our facilities going. And that's a 1.11% increase, which is very low, but that's because last year we had a part of our project for the playground was in our, was inflated last year's numbers. When you break it out here, you can see the capital component more clearly. You can see employee benefits even in that category when the overall category did not increase so much, the benefits did. And then the program component, so these are, this is the bulk of our budget, so salaries and benefits of teachers, counselors, aides, monitors, nurses, social workers, psychologists, speech therapists, programs for students with disabilities in special schools, mandated training and professional development, library and media, computer sciences, instructional hardware, textbooks, materials, supplies, instructional equipment, student transportation, and athletics and co-curricular activities. If you look here, you can see that, you know, again, teaching regular school and programs for students with disabilities had the largest increases. Teaching regular school, so anything that has to do with, again, the human being, salaries continue to go up, benefits continue to go up. And then programs for students with disabilities, some of which we cannot control, we had a very big jump in this this year. Some, there are some special programs that are run by the state that they price out, and we just have to pay what that bill is. And this year in particular, we had to pay retroactively because they changed rates retroactively, and then we had to pay those fees for prior years. If you look in athletics and co-curricular, there's some, you know, we've tried to improve some of our equipment and, and our uniforms and, and make sure that our teams get out on the fields looking sharp, and there's some increases there. And then, let me see what else is significant there. You can see also employee benefits that are broken out there. Again, those are significant costs to the district. So the overall year-to-year change in this category is 6.11%. So Mr. Woodard is going to explain here, everybody's favorite slides.
He does an excellent job.
All right, solid start here, here we go. All right, how are my school taxes calculated? This is a sheet with a lot of information, so I'm going to try to break it down. So hopefully you guys have a better understanding of how school taxes are calculated in our district. If you follow with me along the top, and then we'll work on the bottom, or the left-hand side and work our way down. Our current school year tax levy that Ms. Sexton just explained is at $8.8 million up top. So how do we spread that out amongst our tax-paying residents in the district? What you start out with, and again, it's that worded thing in the yellow band, we take the assessed value of property for every town within our school district. And this isn't something that we come up with, it's actually determined by the local town assessors. And again, just another, why is there so many towns listed? Because Whitney Point is a large, massive district. We have 11 different municipalities, which is probably the most in our region. And we also have property within four separate counties for our district. Again, I don't want to go into the details and confuse everyone, so again, I'm just going to focus on Barker, which is on the left. But again, if you add up all the value of all the property of all the towns in our school district, determined by the town assessors, they say there's $392 million worth of property in our school. The town of Barker, they represent 90.9 million of that number, so a pretty, pretty good chunk. And then you can see all the other municipalities and where they end up. All right, so now that we know that Barker has 90.9 million dollars of property in our district, what do we do with it? This is where, again, the state comes in and says, "How do we know that that assessor is really valuing the property correctly in that town?" So the state, they have their own mechanism to determine what is the true property values of certain areas. They base this off the last time there was a town-wide reassessment. They look at that data, they do other random checks of demographics and things like that of the area, see when it was done. And what they do is they spit out every year this percentage. And interestingly enough, this is, I think, the first year I've done this where we've had no municipality valued at 100%, which is basically a true valuation of what that property is. What does that mean? The state for the town of Barker, they say their property values are assessed 77% accurately. So what does that mean? Again, this is how we get a level playing field. So you take that $90 million of the town of Barker, we say it's only assessed 77% accurately, this is where we get the true value of the property in the town of Barker is $118 million. So again, it takes that equate, or that factor out of the equation of, you know, when was the last time they were assessed? Is it fair? Again, this is the formula the state is using to say this is how you value property and what it's really worth in the state of New York. So if you apply that same principle across all the other municipalities, what our true value of property is, again, the assessor said it's $392 million of property. When we take in the state formula for calculating the true value, the real value of all the property in our district is $579 million. Quite a number, I must say. Again, half a, half a billion dollars. So now we, we have this great thing, right? So now we, we know what our tax levy is, we know what the true value of all the property, we've applied this formula for equity amongst all the municipalities, now what do we do with it? Well, for Barker, we're saying the true value is $118 million, $118 million divided by that $579 million of all the property, we're going to say Barker is responsible for 20.36% of the school tax levy. Again, you can see how all those other municipalities shake out, that's their portion of the school tax levy that they're responsible for, and those residents contribute to the school. And how do we get that into the form of a tax bill, right? So if you follow the formula again, we know that Barker is responsible for 20.36% of our levy. We multiply that by our school tax levy of the 8.8 million on the top of the slide. And that's where we say, again, Barker's worth, or we get $1.8 million from the town of Barker. Again, if you follow all those numbers across the screen, it will equal that roughly $8.8 million up there. And again, now that we know Barker has that much, we go back to the value of the property within the district, or the municipality, I'm sorry. And that's where you get an actual tax rate. So again, it kind of ties back into the assessed property value. So what we're saying is for whatever the assessor said that house is worth in the town of Barker, all those houses being worth $90 million, even though we know, according to state formula, the real value is $118 million, the Barker tax rate per 1,000 is $19.93. So what that means is, again, well, you know, I'm going to go to the next slide because I think that'll help explain it, but again, just keep that in mind. We're trying to have a level playing field, we're trying to make sure there's equity and that no one town or municipality is kind of, you know, they're being held in check, right? We want to make sure they're, they're being assessed accurately, and, you know, $100,000 house is being taxed appropriately regardless of where you live in the district. So I'm going to shoot to the next slide, if I have to, I can go back to this one. All right, this one's way more easy, hopefully it'll understand. But again, basically what that was, it was the formula of how we get that tax rate. And what do we do with that tax rate? You'll see here on the slide, again, for simplicity, the way it should work is in green, okay? So if the assessor assessed, or reassessment and assessed everything accurately, it's 100%, right? The state's saying, "Yep, that's accurate, you're 100% equalization rate." So $100,000 property assessed by the assessor is worth $100,000, according to the state. All down, the true rate in Whitney Point, again, if everyone was assessed at 100%, is $15.35 per $1,000 of property value. And this is kind of where you can kind of see the disparity in what we're trying to get to. So a true $100,000 property, you can reasonably assume the tax bill would be $1,535. So now, again, all that calculations and formulas I went to in the previous slide, this is what we're trying to do. If we have $100,000 property in the town triangle, the state says that's not accurate, for whatever reason, we're telling you it's 75% accurate, the true value of that $100,000 house in Triangle is really $133,000. So that's what it should be taxed at, not 100,000. When you go down that example, again, that tax rate we just determined from the previous slide, even though the assessor says that house in Triangle is worth 100,000, it's really worth $133,000, it'll be taxed at a little bit of a higher rate, but again, that's where you get the tax bill being $2,047. And the reason, right, where that property, even though it's assessed at $100,000 in Triangle, it's really, its true value is $133,000. So if you kind of look through the other two examples, again, that's all we're trying to do, if a property is in each one of these municipalities, $100,000 house by the assessor, you can have $100,000 property in each one of these towns, but it doesn't mean it's what's really worth. If you put it on the market, that $100,000 house in Triangle should give you $133,000, the $100,000 house in Willett should sell for $167,000. And then Nanticoke, obviously, you know, they, they have not been assessed, I think, in quite some time. The $100,000 assessment in the town of Nanticoke, that value of property is really worth $246,000. So that's what we're taxing the school rate on. Again, it's not what the assessed value is, it's what the true value is. I'm sure it's confusing, hopefully I didn't confuse you guys too much. Was there any specific questions on this slide?
Free chat, Zach.
I hope, thank you. So that's how that formula works and how we get our true tax rate for Whitney Point. So this slide really represents what is the true tax rate in all of our other neighboring districts in our BOSI's region. And I like this slide because it kind of shows you, Whitney Point is, I think, kind of where we want to be, right? You look at some of our neighboring districts, Weble, Apple Lake, North Valley, Windsor, we're right there towards the bottom, but in that little cluster, that's a good cluster to be in. You know, I think we'd have some other things we'd have to deal with if we were at the top end of this, this slide. So again, $100,000 valued property in Susquehanna Valley School District, they're paying roughly $2,300 in school tax. In Whitney Point, the school tax is $1,535. And you could go down the bottom, you know, Tyoga, Deposit, they're a little bit of outliers, they have some other things within their district that affect their tax rate. Specifically, Tyoga's been significantly low for a very long time, they had the casino there, they also had some big budget reductions in the past, and they've had some massive tax increases to try to bring that rate up. But that's why it appears so low here in the regional comparison. Deposit, they have an interesting tax agreement with New York City for the reservoir use. So again, that kind of helps offsets that tax levy as well. But the rest of these, they're fairly accurate, and I think it's kind of a very informative slide from my perspective. And, you know, I feel proud to say, you know, where we are and where we land in this, I'm glad our, our values are on the lower end and not that higher end for some of our, you know, neighbors around Benhampton. Again, just to reiterate what I've said a few times, again, just for simplicity, you have $100,000 property in Whitney Point, that is your tax rate is $15.35 per 1,000. What we're projecting in this budget, that 2.05% increase that we went over, what does that mean? Your $100,000 property, you could roughly see a $31 increase on that this upcoming school year. Again, you break that down, it's about eight cents a day. And, you know, these are projections, we don't have final, you know, numbers, we don't get those until July, we don't get the final equalization rates until then. We don't get the final equalization rates until then. And that's kind of where, again, we take the school budget, tax levy, we work with the towns, and that's how we get the tax bill sent out right around September. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. So again, accomplishing our budget goals, we obviously are focusing on education because that's what it's all about. We build a sustainable budget so that we are not getting ourselves in a hole or in a crisis from year to year. And we always try to be really conscious of the taxpayers and the burden on them. In summary, we look to maintain enrichment opportunities and continue to provide needed supports to our students. We support a variety of STEAM and career and technical programs to give our students a better chance of post-school success. Continue to work and grow all current partnerships and arrangements throughout the district. We look to, not just because we're, you know, we don't have a huge tax base, to really leverage our partnerships and work with other organizations so that we can bring more into our district. We continue to provide our students and community with facilities that are adequately maintained and are top-notch. And we try to be innovative and you can see some of that. Our recent projects gave us some really cool spaces for kids to learn in. Continue to be responsible stewards of our facilities so that we have a constant maintenance cycle, so that we don't have a crisis there either, where all of a sudden we have something collapsing or something that we have to spend a ton of money on. We try to always project what's going to need attention. Can we continue to fund our 100,000 dollar capital outlay improvement projects? Again, that's a way that we continue to do that in small steps so that we can stay ahead of things. And in this budget, our tax levy limit that we are given by the state, which has very complicated calculations, but is 3%. So our proposed tax levy increase is 2.05%, which is less than the limit that we were given. So the budget proposition is that, shall the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District be authorized to appropriate for the budget the sum of $48,651,344 for the '25-'26 school year and levy the necessary tax therefore with a projected tax levy increase of 2.05%? And then proposition for the election of Board of Education members. We have two three-year terms presently held by Christine Widdall and Tiana Mosman. And we have candidates, Dr. Christine Widdall and Michelle Sanford. And any other potential write-in candidates could also appear. These terms will commence on July 1st, 2025. We also have a bus proposition. As you may know, if you've been a voting member of our community, you know that we try to continually maintain our fleet and update buses so again, that we don't end up in a crisis at any point. Busing in Whitney Point in particular is really critical. We have a very large district, as Zach just reviewed for you when you look at all those townships. We have a separate proposition which will be placed on the ballot. Shall the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District be authorized to purchase four new 71-passenger diesel buses at a cost not to exceed $814,176? And then Mr. Woodard likes to put little facts in here. Did you know that the state reimburses the district for 90% of most of our transportation-related expenditures? And that we have 51 DOT inspected vehicles in our fleet? Our buses annually travel over 540,000 miles, which is equivalent to driving around the Earth's circumference more than 9.5 times in one year? Yeah.
That's significant.
And then again, our vote is on May 20th in the high school cafeteria from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, as Ms. Sexton said, the vote will be on May 20th from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the high school cafeteria. The voting will be done by voting machine. And Dr. Widdoll's not with us tonight, but she did leave something to present with Mrs. Champion.
She left a little biography so you can all know a little bit about her. Dr. Chris Widdoll is a Brim County native and has lived in Whitney Point almost all of her life. As a Whitney Point resident, she has been very active in both school and community events. Besides being an active parent and now grandparent, she has taken on many other roles like 4-H leader, youth club coach, after-prom party volunteer, activity chaperone, student advocate, Red Cross, WSI, and first aid instructor, modified coach, senior center supervisor, community volunteer, and a school board trustee for the last seven years. Additionally, as retired SUNY Cortland Assistant Dean and Associate Professor, she uses her 26-year teacher education to support educational awareness in the district. Dr. Widdoll believes that a board member must ensure equitable and progressive education for all students. She does this by dynamically listening and engaging in changes when needed, attending Bosse's informational meetings, being a legislative shadow, and informing elective officials like communities' needs and concerns. She is humbled by the responsibility of being a board member and with your vote promises to continue to use her knowledge toward the betterment of services in our school, for the students, our families, and the Whitney Point community.
Thank you. And the second candidate that you will see on the ballot this year is Michelle Sanford, and she is here with us tonight. Michelle, did you want to say anything? I'm just going to bring you this, I'm sorry, otherwise it...
Yeah, hi. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Michelle Sanford. I am a 2013 Whitney Point graduate. I currently have two children in the pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 programs. My husband and I recently, this past fall, we did coach the U6 soccer. Just kind of getting our toes wet with being involved in the community. We built a lot of really, really strong friendships, connections. And I'm also a member of the Whitney Point Community and Family Engagement Project. I think it's very important to me to be involved in the community. And I find that students, we're all here for students. And the more I become involved in the community, the more I understand the saying, "It takes a village." So I think having the opportunity to be on the board with such a wonderful group of people, it means a lot to me because I have kids in the, within the community. And hopefully, my good intentions and honesty will go a long way. Thank you.
And now I will turn it over to Mrs. Champion to suspend the hearing.
Okay. The board will now suspend the meeting until 1:00 p.m. on May 20th, 2025, at which time the polls will be open. So we now enter the regular portion of our public meeting. Do we have the need of an executive session? We do not have a need now. Does not preclude that we won't have one later. So we've come to policy discussion.
So in your, for policies for discussion, we have a, I don't know if you saw it, if you want to page the copy? So this is part of our... This is part of our effort to just deal with all the antiquated policies that we have. We had a policy that was established in 1994 that was entitled Weapons in School, and it pertained to students. It is recommended that we also have a policy for weapons in school pertaining to the community. So this is sort of a two-phase proposal that we update. Again, 1994 was a long time ago. We update our Weapons in School policy for students and that we add a policy pertaining to the community. Now, what is included here is just proposals, but it's exactly verbatim from the Erie One policies that they suggest. Aubrey had a question. Do you want to share that?
Oh, yeah, my question was, under what circumstances would we permit students to bring a weapon to school?
I don't think ever. But it is in, that's the language in the law.
So it's the wording?
Right.
I'm with her, but I understand where she's coming from.
Yeah, the, so the penal law that covers this says that you're not allowed to have any weapons on school grounds without the written authorization of such educational institution. And that's why I think it's included in the policy. I don't know that it has to be.
I would think that possibly it would be something that isn't functional, but like Civil War.
Well, that's what I, yeah.
Or something historic that would be brought in that's considered a weapon, but it isn't functional anymore would be allowed to be brought in, but it would be in this circumstance.
Is a photo not a weapon?
I'm just saying, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying that if you have something physical, because if you go to reenactments or different things, they usually have the weapon. And to me, personally, if it's something you can see and touch, it's a lot more tangible than looking at, not saying it's good or bad. But that's one of the things I could foresee that they would allow. If it is not functioning and if it came in, then it would still be educational, I would think.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking that might be.
And I do, and I know that, you know, in the past, that exact scenario did happen, but I know that we don't really do that anymore just because we're in a different world now where, you know, there's, you know, people are, school shootings are a real fear. So even if somebody didn't know that that was just a historical, but... So I don't, I mean, it's, I mean, it's the board's policy. So it's brought to you for discussion. We don't have to act on it even at the next meeting, but I think that we should certainly update the 1994 policy. And I think that we should make sure that we have something with the community.
Although this, I know we use the Erie for a guideline, I would be a proponent of rewording that sentence only because I think the interpretation of it, although I like what Tom said, I still think it could cause problems.
Right.
It's just, it's just my opinion.
I think the one thing we would have to research then is whether, because the law that is driving this, whether we're required to have that in there.
Well, and just to take it one step further, my second question was, we still have archery?
We do.
So they're far weapons. So is archery considered a weapon? Well, but the archery that we currently have in gym class, do they use rubber?
Well, that's where I'm going with this. Like, is there rubber on the end? Like, I'm curious.
No, there's...
There's arrows.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. I wasn't sure about that. That's a valid point. So could we look into the law and see?
We can, we can get some specific legal advice. And then also, what, how you account for that for me?
I think it's ravelled.
I mean, what, you know, what constitutes a weapon? Because there are other tools that we use in art class. There are things that you could...
Kids can make shapes.
I remember going to family court and I had a, I have a micro tool that has a blade that's this big. That was taken away and I could bring in a metal pen that was that big. I, it's just kind of bizarre to me. What was wild and what was not.
Okay. All right, anything else that you would like to learn more about regarding that?
I think the big thing is exactly, you know, a little more definition for us to understand what is, you know, a weapon, what's a firearm, and how we account for the fact that, you know, we do archery and what the difference is. And it may be that because archery is done under very supervised circumstances, it's visible, everybody knows it's there. It's not something that's being pulled out unawares and being used.
All right.
And I know it could be changed later, but I know some schools actually do shooting sports as well. And, I mean, I know that can get into a lot of things, but if it's too constrictive now, I mean, I don't want it to be not safe, but it would have to be considered to take into account all of that.
Okay. So I will research that and then we'll bring it back for discussion again at the next meeting? Okay?
And I do, because I know, one of the things I looked at it really quick and I had a lot of time to look at it, but, because I was wondering what it was listed to, but it does list what a weapon is as per...
Yeah.
So that...
Yeah.
But I know that the law says, lists a whole bunch of things and says, "But not limited to."
That's right.
That always exists.
And we like that language.
These are examples, but these are not the only examples.
Exactly. The stuff we used to do that we didn't get in trouble for.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you for that.
So the next one, so we did weapons. Are we going to discuss the student representative to the Board of Education?
So as you know, as of July 1st, we have to have a student representative. We had a brief conversation, Chris and Stephanie and I, and I sent you some information about what's required. I know one of the policies was open at the time that I sent it to you. It's not, no longer. It was a school district's policy, but the NISBA policy is linked there. I think the policy is almost secondary to us deciding what we would like to see. One of the points that we discussed, Stephanie, Chris, and I in preparing for this meeting, was, I think Chris was under the impression that you could only have one member, but that's not the case. You have to have at least one student member. And we had a discussion about the possibility of having a, maybe a junior and a senior. And then that, then you could onboard them both in the first year. And also, it might be nice to have, because kids are busy, they might be able to alternate if they needed to. And then the following year, the senior could sort of help mentor a new junior joining. We also talked together about the fact that you didn't really want it to be a popularity contest.
Right.
And that maybe we would not, you know, that there are, there is an existing student council, but maybe we want to tap into some other students to give them a chance to have some leadership positions. So we did briefly talk about an application process. Is that, and then I linked in here a district who does that, which I thought was a pretty straightforward, simple process.
I like the application process because it gives everyone a chance, if they're really interested, to pursue that, an opportunity as opposed to a popularity contest.
And that doesn't preclude teachers recommending somebody that, hey, you might be really good at this.
Exactly.
You know.
Or a student council member that still wants to apply.
Sure, absolutely. Yep. I don't want to discourage it, but I think it gives everybody an opportunity to pursue that. They would like, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. So what are your thoughts about having two?
I think that's a great idea, I think.
I think it would work this year if it has to be done by July. The senior this year would be kind of...
No, what would be is starting July 1st. Is going to be a senior next year.
Okay. That's all I was...
And it would start in September, right?
It was, it's supposed to start July 1st, but they said they'll give you grace because kids are, you know, their schedules are busy.
Okay.
But we would, we would be appointing them at our first meeting.
Okay.
So we've got to get on it.
Yeah. And I, the reason why we thought, you know, a junior and a senior was that then we would have somebody who'd be on for two years. And like Joanne said, they would be able to, when they become a senior, they would be able to help out the junior. And again, it's, kids are really busy. If they have a sports game or whatever, it gives them more flexibility in terms of, you know, one can attend, one doesn't. And they can both technically attend, but only one can sit at the table with us at a time.
Yep.
Did we have a list of their responsibilities so they know what they're getting into?
Yeah, it, it's.
Is that in the application?
Yeah, it's in that, uh, sample application and, um, I can have that ready for you for next meeting, if that, if this is the way you want to go. Yeah.
Yeah, will you have enough time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Neil?
I, I think.
Okay, good.
I'm shaking my head, but Aubrey, you can't probably see her, so.
I also attended the, um, NISBA webinar for the student members joining. And some of the things that they said that I thought were interesting is there are resources for intergenerational collaboration. So there's like the co-creation generation, which will help us to communicate with the youth of today. And also, one of the students said that one of the things they liked to miss was having their own line item on the agenda so that they could speak and get feedback as well.
Well, just like we have the Board of Education comment.
Yep.
We can have.
Yep, and that, that webinar is recorded, so if you want to watch it after the fact, you still can.
Is there anything else that caught your eye?
Yeah, a lot of things.
Is there anything else you want to share? I, I just, I find it interesting.
There were some quotes that I liked as people were speaking, like, students are the expert of their experience, so they're the ones that are the people on the ground living it. So a lot of their feedback is very important. They provide like that firsthand accounts and they can also tell us how the policies that we approve are actually playing out. And they said, one thing that was helpful in schools that have done this for multiple years now is having the senior train the junior. So that way they know what they're getting into for the next year. And that a lot of the success of the student depends on the feedback that we provide to them and the coaching that we give them.
That's funny. Good chat for them. That's, that's a really good theme. I love that.
Okay. All right, so we've got a direction, thank you.
I love it.
So that finishes up our policy discussion. We do not have any policies for first reading. We do however have a policy for second reading, which is policy number seven, one, four, one, McKinney-Vento Liaison for Students in Temporary Housing. And who, which is an update of the title, um, and it's for second reading and adoption. May I have a motion?
So I saw all the changes were made, so.
Right, but we have to, before we can discuss it, we have.
Thank you.
And a second?
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, all the, the changes I noticed from last one, I don't think they were changed.
Yeah.
And I like the consistency of the policies going forward, keeping, um, you know, if we're gonna underline, don't underline, you know?
Yep.
The heading, basically everything we talked about.
Yep.
I think it looks nice.
And also, um, making the change from parents to, you know, guardian, the parent's guardians, so it's more inclusive almost, yeah.
And we clarified the acronyms, they weren't all, like, we said, um, they weren't all clear. I know, they just throw those acronyms around.
Everybody uses them.
Yeah.
Is there an acronym for acronyms? Just wondering. Sorry. I think it reads much better at this point.
Yeah, I do too.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All those in favor for adopting this?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? This brings us to our first opportunities for comments from the public. Each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and the entire public comment period to a maximum of thirty minutes. This may be waived by a majority vote of the board. The board requests that each speaker stand, states their name, residency, and topic of discussion. By law, the board will not permit any public statements regarding individual students or employees. And please be advised that while the board takes public comment very seriously, we are not allowed to comment or respond during the meeting as this is our opportunity to hear from our stakeholders. Items brought to the attention of the board will be taken under consideration for future responses or action, or the proper staff member will get back to you at the appropriate time. Also keep in mind that there is a second opportunity for comments from the public towards the end of the meeting. And at this point, I will open up to see if anybody would like to bring something forward today. Okay, we will have our second opportunity at the end. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I couldn't, wait, patience, Nick. So, respectfully, who's in charge of this meeting?
Technically, that would be me.
Okay. We have to hear a little bit about flag, head, and hip.
Okay.
All right. To your right, on the left side of the podium, as, as the group is facing. There can be flags, almost to the way from the podium. I, I bit my tongue because it just, I'm just a stickler about that with all the.
And I under.
Surprise, oh, and follow the meetings, don't you? It's not in the right spot. It, it just hurts me a little bit. All right, so, aside from that, I still did one, you know?
Absolutely.
You got into a bunch of discussions, very important here. And I'm, I'm going through what I saw in the news over there. What I didn't see though was, uh, mentioning the increase to state aid under the. It wasn't a percentage, or we had increased, but yet there's a percentage on how much our taxes are going to be raised. But they, to me, that, that should have been a balance. You can talk. The other thing that I, I want to make, uh, going down through line items, I'm saying this to think this is a increase, seems like there's a jab to the, uh, salary and benefits. So those new kind of features, like the room, or that set, it, it's, I'm getting along with it, but it's sad. Last one, on the, uh, like, I used to, uh, surrounding districts. I didn't see the green district listed in that. Just wanted to know why, because I, I think they're a comparable district.
Can I respond to that one?
There's a few, uh.
Yeah. Just those districts listed were the ones in our, uh, Boses region, so the Broome Title of Boses region. That, that's the only reason why.
Well, I'm ju, again, I'm just gonna say, um, when we talk about the, the realities of salary and benefits is in absolutely no way a disrespect to everybody who works so hard in the district. It's just a fact of life, um, that those things continue to go up and that, you know, drives our budget. We have to pay competitive salaries because we need the best people to be working here with our kids. And, um, and those people work very hard to make those salaries. So that was not in any way meant to, to diminish them or to, you know, complain about them. It's just a, you know, a reality of life. Just want to have that as a matter of record for the recording because that was absolutely not, not the intention.
And thank you very much for your input, we appreciate it. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Commendations?
Okay, um, so commendations, we'll start with our high school robotics, um, team member Peyton Fish for earning second place in the maze programming challenge at the 2025 STEM Hub Robotics Competition held at SUNY Broome on April fifteenth. Mrs. Cook and the high school student council for their donations of, of three hundred and sixty-four dollars to the Whitney Point Food Pantry and one thousand ninety-two dollars to the Green Food Pantry. These funds were raised from the Whitney Point Faculty Basketball Game. Whitney Point High School seniors Andrew Whitaker and Dylan Wood for earning first place in welding fabrication at the New York State Skills USA Competition that was held in Syracuse, New York. The Newbury Honor Award winning author Cynthia Lord for visiting the TRA to present to students. Thank you to Mrs. Hotkinson for arranging this special visit. The CEA Specials Department, Mr. Hildebrand, Mrs. Hubbard, Mr. Samsel, Mrs. Montesano, and Mrs. Ferguson for hosting the annual CEA Spring Festival, a celebration of art, music, library, and physical education, held on May first. Thank you also to the second grade students for their vocal performance and hallway art show, as well as the many students and families who at, who attended. Thank you also to the Whitney Point School District employees. In honor of everything that they do this week is called Teacher Appreciation Week, but in our district, we celebrate all of our employees who work so hard every single day. They are, they are incredibly dedicated to our students and we are very, very thankful to them. Not just this week, but every week. Whitney Point High School alumna, uh, Alicia Widdall for her induction into the Great, Greater Binghamton Sports Hall of Fame. She did a great job at that, uh, event that evening and it was an impressive group of other, uh, athletes from the region. And then commendations to Mrs. Pollan, Mr. Jones, all the people who chaperoned and gave of their time to take the Whitney Point High School Band and Chorus, uh, to Music in the Parks. They were, received a third place in their categories, uh, chorus received an excellent rating. The students earned the Esprit, Esprit de Corr, uh, award for the third year in a row. And that recognizes that they, um, displayed exemplary attitude of positive support and outstanding personal behavior. All right, do you want to add to that?
One thing of note is that from the moment those students step off bus at the performance site, they are being observed for how cooperative they are, how helpful they are to each other, how their demeanor is, how quiet they are in the hallways, how supportive they are of each other. And so, and not only at the performance site, but there are also Music from the Parks representatives in the park that day, observing the students. It, they all end up wearing, you know, school T-shirts, so they're easy to identify. And so, you know, if you have a bunch of kids who are running around screaming and yelling, that doesn't reflect as well towards that. So, um, the Esprit de Corr is probably for most students, more important to them than how they're rated on their playing. Because when they're playing, that's a, that's a snapshot right there. But when they get the Esprit de Corr, especially for the third year in a row, it's a really big deal. We had a lot of students who started crying when it was announced, so.
Wonderful, that's great.
Okay, that's it. Old business, we have none. We do not have any presentations tonight. I think we saved them all for the twentieth when we'll be waiting for the vote.
Oh, boy.
That brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second. Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? That brings us to new business. We have several, uh, retirement resignations. Gwen Houst, typist, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments?
Congratulations.
She's been here a long time.
I was gonna say, it'll be weird going in and not seeing that face.
Yeah, I don't know, I would, I can't tell you how many times, how many times I call Gwen a day, I don't know what I'm gonna do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Wendy, is it whoop?
Hope.
Hope, okay. Part-time food service helper, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, may I have a motion? Thank you, Aubrey, and a second. Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments?
We wish Wendy well. Can I just say that both Gwen, I think Gwen started in nineteen ninety-nine, I think. Wendy, I think, started in nineteen ninety-eight. So a lot of years, a lot of, uh, hard work for our district.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Kathleen Cornell, full-time teacher's aide, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Aubrey. Any questions or comments?
I really miss Kathy very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? I laughed when I just saw this one. Joseph Kuchar, community schools coordinator, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom, and a second. Thank you, Aubrey. So this is his second time retiring.
I think he really means it this time.
Oh, say it ain't so.
Now, he'll be back one way or another.
I hope so. He's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, so, I told you when they started, he started in nineteen eighty-six.
Really?
Yeah.
Eighty-six?
And he was retired for less.
He didn't really ever, we didn't really let him ever.
Really retired.
He's done like various part-time roles and he most recently has been, you know, working with community schools.
Yeah.
And Tom works with him a lot.
He was here when I was here.
Yep.
I loved him.
I have to say, he's probably one of the people in this district that has made a difference for a tremendous amount of people.
For sure.
Over the years, I mean, an unbelievable amount of difference for people.
I would second that.
Students and adults alike.
Yep. That's great.
And all the heavy lifting, he does deserve it, but he still can't go. He definitely deserves it.
Maybe he'll take a vacation and come back.
Yeah.
Very, very well deserved.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, four-year probationary appointment of Jessica Diedrich, special education teacher in the special education teacher tenure area, effective May seventh, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second. Thank you, Aubrey. Another example of a alumna coming back to teach.
And she's been doing the job, but she, um, worked her way through and got her certification and, and it just got processed.
Very excited for her.
She's worked very hard.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, poll clerks. Their rate of pay will be fifteen dollars and fifty cents per hour. Susan Ellerson, Phyllis Edwards, Christine Morehouse, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments?
Everything's digital, they're just checking, uh, folks in, signing.
Reading, greet them.
Okay, that's it, just want to make sure.
Yep.
They have to physically sign in still.
You still have to sign in, yes.
Yeah, we don't have the, um, the digital.
Right, we're still.
But the voting is.
But, yeah, the voting is. Right, the voting's digital, but when you come in, you sign your name.
You sign the book, yeah.
Very good, okay.
So somebody needs to facilitate that.
Yep, appreciate it, thanks for the clarity.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Last day of school. The last day of school for all students, pre-K through eight, will be a half-day on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. The last instructional day for high school students will be a full day on Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Regions and final exams will be held on June seventeenth, eighteenth, twentieth, twenty-third, and June twenty-fourth through twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. The last day for faculty will be on Friday, June twenty-seventh, is that a full day?
If everything gets done, then so will I. They have a checklist.
No problem. The last day for the staff unit, which includes aides and food service workers, will be a full day on Tuesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
And that's assuming we don't have to use any more emergency days.
Right, yeah, right.
No flooding.
No flooding. I was getting pretty nervous with all the warnings tonight.
No freaks, no storms on Mother's Day.
Yes.
Okay, that does bring us to our second opportunity for comments from the public. Same guidelines that I read for the first opportunity, um, still hold true for this one. Same guidelines that I read for the first opportunity still hold true for this one. So is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? Going once? Going twice? Oh, I did skip superintendent's update. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I saw it. I saw it. I forgot to tell you that.
No, that's my fault because I need to put a star next to it when it's, like, one...
So what I, the update is not that exciting. We're gonna talk about timeline for evaluations.
Yep.
That's all. So we just took the evaluation timeline from last year and amended it and then we just need to make sure that it's okay with you. We would like you to have the board's self-evaluation completed by our next meeting on the 20th.
Okay.
Can we do that?
I need to get it...
Probably not.
I will, I'll get it done. Do the best you can.
Every year, this is not a good time.
It's okay.
Yeah, okay, well.
It's my last year.
You're not selling it very well.
Welcome to the table. I'll still come visit.
All right, and I would have my self-evaluation done, where did I say that? By the same time. And then the board will complete the superintendent's evaluation by June 3rd. The president and the vice president will look at the completed evaluations and they will put together a, you're gonna have some kind of work sessions there, the two of you, and you'll put together some tentative proposed goals based on the self-evaluations, tidy up the superintendent's evaluation. And then the board president will meet with the superintendent prior to the June work session. I guess discuss that with me. And then on, the long and the short of it is that by the June 20th meeting, we would have everything wrapped up.
So I have a quick question.
Yep.
Since this is my last year. So as long as I get the evaluations done, like, I wouldn't be going to any additional workshop.
No, the work sessions are for us to discuss our findings with our self-evaluation, which we would want you there because...
For the following year, right, okay.
Because we would still want your input.
Oh, sure, okay.
And then, of course, you're still a board member, so we would still want you to, any work session that we have to discuss, our evaluation of Joanne.
Okay, oh, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure I understood, like, where I fall into those discussions to set you up for the following year.
Yeah, and even if I...
You're not off the hook yet.
No, 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 I don't wanna be. I look forward to doing the evaluation.
And even if some chance that we weren't able to complete everything by July 1st, we would still have you come to those work sessions because...
Because I was here.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, just wanted to ask that question. But basically, we want both evaluations done before our next meeting.
No, the self-evaluation...
Self-one?
Just the self-evaluation.
By the next, by the May 20th.
Okay.
And then Joanne's evaluation by the 3rd, June 3rd.
But I could work on both of them now.
Absolutely.
If I have time. Okay, that's what I'd rather do.
Okay.
Get them done.
So Board of Education comments. First topic is new board member orientation. Obviously, we are going to definitely have one new board member, potentially two, depending if somebody runs a big writing candidate campaign. I know Stacy that we had gotten that information for the new board member orientation from NISBA. And I've never been able to get in and I should have mentioned it before this time and I apologize. So if you can help me figure out how to get logged into that again, that would be helpful. Because obviously, we're gonna need it.
What did we do last year for Benny and Aubrey?
One of the first things we did is that we held a work session prior to the reorg meeting in July and we basically went through, step-by-step, a sample agenda so that they would have an idea of what... Because the reorg meeting, it's a tough meeting for it to be your first one because there's so much in it. And so much that you don't see any other time of the year. So last year, we started doing that.
Did you find that helpful?
It did, very much. And there's the training at BOSI's too.
Yeah.
For anybody who's... Yes, and that was very helpful as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
What does NISBA have that's a little different?
Well, that's what we need to see.
Oh, okay.
It was like $40 for the course and then I was never able to get in. And so, they have sent us, like, they have a, one of their booklets and stuff like that, but just some guided things to help us make sure that we're not forgetting anything. But I think the biggest thing that we started this year was having that work session prior to the reorg meeting.
That's good, I'm glad you found that useful. Yeah, good.
Because otherwise, it's kinda like being dumped into the fire.
Yeah.
It's like, I had no idea what any of that...
I didn't even know, I was like, what, is this what every meeting's gonna be? This is scary.
But the reorganization meeting is, the whole first portion of it is all of those things that we have to approve every year. And if you don't know what those are, it's like, how can you approve them?
Yep.
So, well, again, we'll, once we know who the board members are gonna be, we will have another work session and hopefully, anybody who can attend will and we'll go over what a reorg meeting looks like. And part of that is also the regular things that we do for a meeting too, so.
Good.
So you're not going in with no knowledge.
That's brilliant, very helpful. Now, the board retreat.
Yep.
So we would do that typically in the summertime. Now, I will not be part of that, correct?
Correct.
Because I will be done.
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure. So any discussions?
Unless we're doing anything, we're still working on evaluations, in which case, we'll have your proportion, but we shouldn't...
Let's not break it to her yet that retreat really isn't retreat.
Well, sure it is because we get city chicken.
Oh, the city chicken is good, from the red and white. It's good.
It's the only time of year I get it.
It is good. It's good food, you get good food.
But, yeah, if everybody can start sending either Joanne or Stacy or myself what their availability or actually what you...
Lack of availability.
Yeah. So the dates that you absolutely can't be available for to start with.
And when do you want the retreats for them? Is it June, July? What are you looking at for timing that you want them to send the dates? Does Tom, you do a lot of vacation though, in July, August?
I do a lot of programs, I work.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We generally look at July and August. So if you can send before the June 3rd meeting what you have so far, what you know that you're unavailable for, that will at least give us a place to start. And I think we covered the evaluations. Does anybody else on the board have anything?
I just wanted to add, I know it was mentioned earlier and I just wanna just reiterate again that I know you mentioned about the teacher appreciation and I know the teachers are appreciated. I've been involved with schools for a long time. I've had a lot of relative work in schools. And I have to say that I am very pleased to be involved with this district where they look at all employees, all employees, as important people to the district. And it definitely does not happen in other places. So it's been a pretty longstanding thing here. And I'm very proud to be up here, but I'm even more proud that you people look at everyone equally here. And that is tremendous and that's why I think that a lot of people like to work there.
Everybody's critical.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
And sometime, it would be interesting, not that anybody really has to do that, it would be interesting to see what percentage of our employees are alumni.
Oh, that is a good, that would be great to know.
I just, you know, if anybody, if it's something that is easy to look at, that would be interesting.
Yeah.
If it's not easy, then don't worry about it. It's just something that I've been thinking about, you know, as we keep having, you know, so many people who went to school here and when we were listening to the teachers who were getting tenure this evening saying, "I went to school here, I went to school here." It's just, that would be just something that would be interesting.
It would be just a nice...
If it were possible.
While Zach's always throwing in those cool zingers of cool information.
I don't think the high school graduations are my financial fault.
No, they're not, but it is, you have a knack for cool information, fun facts. How about that?
Do we have a need for an executive session?
Can we do?
Awesome. That is fabulous.
Not that I, you know, that I would be upset if we had one, but...
Don't keep pushing it, it'll just get...
So we are going to adjourn the meeting at 7:30. May I have a motion?
Some move.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom.
My goodness.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Thank you very much, everybody who attended. We appreciate it.
Sorry, I hope that didn't come across well. Joanne, one of the several people mentioned to me that they would have liked to see, you know, the nice flyer that you sent out about the budget and everything, how many students are in the school district?